If everybody would stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we'll remain standing for a moment of silence, please. You may be seated. Do we have any agenda additions or deletions? No? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, we have some presentations tonight. We're going to start out with a certification of appreciation for our town attorney, who we dearly love and is, are going to miss. I was, probably, I'm the only council member or was here when you started back in 2016, and we chose you over, I think, three or four other people, and we made a really good decision, and we're really going to miss you. I think we all feel, I'm speaking for the whole council, that we're going to miss you a lot, and we wish you well.
Thank you.
Very well. I have something to read to you. It's a certificate of appreciation, Attorney Karen Walter. Whereas Attorney Karen Walter, a member of the Bar Association for the state of North Carolina and partner with the firm Ringwater &amp; Snover, has been a tremendous asset to the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, throughout the past five and a half years as the town attorney. Whereas Attorney Walter's service to the council and staff has been marked by exemplary dedication and was at all times focused on the well-being of the town. Whereas Attorney Walter has exhibited the highest caliber of work ethic and her services have been invaluable. Whereas the council and staff of the town of Indian Trail greatly appreciate all her professionalism, advice, and hard work during her tenure here with the town. And whereas Attorney Walter will be greatly missed. Now therefore, I, David Cone, Mayor of the town of Indian Trail, on behalf of the Indian Trail Town Council, do hereby offer our thanks and gratitude to Ms. Walter for her many years of service to the town of Indian Trail and wish her well in her endeavors. In testimony whereof, I am hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of Indian Trail, North Carolina, on this 22nd day of March 2022. Ms. Walter, and come up and get this, and I would like for you guys to comment if you like. And I think we all should be up here with, come up here and have our picture made. Okay. Okay. Who might be here with Indian Trail? I just, come on up and, if you'll just stand at the podium for a moment, I'll, we have certificate of appreciation, but I wanted to tell you something about, I know it's been 50 years about Indian Trail Athletic Association. I was born and raised in Charlotte, and back in the day, many years ago, I was at South Park Youth Association, I was a baseball commissioner, and we played Indian Trail, they were in Dixie Youth Baseball. And we used to look forward every year to come down and play in the, they had tournaments here, and we'd come. And it was such a pleasure to come to Indian Trail. You know, in Charlotte, we had, we played baseball, but they didn't take it like they did over here. It was a great, small-town atmosphere, and you probably remember Steve Pitt. Steve Pitt was, I don't know if he was the founder, but he was quite heavily involved back in those days. And I knew just about everybody here. That's been a long time ago. My oldest son's 44 years old, so, you know, so it's been 35 years or more ago. But much appreciated for all you do and all you've got, some fine young people that you guys have put through here over the years, and you don't, you know, to be a part of an athletic association and do the things that you do, you should be commended very much for what you do. I don't have anything to read for them, do I? I mean, basically, we're just going to just hand this over. Does anybody want to comment? Make a?
Oh, before we comment, can we ask him to just introduce himself a little bit?
Yeah, would you, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Marcus.
Sorry.
Let me apologize. Yeah, I got carried away.
I'm sorry, sir.
You did the right thing, sorry.
My name is Joe Lane. I am the current Indian Trail Athletic Association President, as of today. I've been volunteering for the last 16 years out there, been the president for a long time now. For the ones that don't know, we're located out at Edna Love Park, right off Par-Par-Par- Park Road out here. There's 24 acres out there that we provide this, this, this community with youth recreational sports, do baseball, softball, soccer, flag football, and basketball. We currently are serving, last year, we served 1,100 kids in this community and around us. This spring, we've already got close to 600 there as well. We're nodding through the year, so we're growing. And as Mr. Cone said, we are celebrating our 50th year this year. So we've been a part of this community for a long time, thanks to the Rogers and their donation and everything else we're there. We appreciate, appreciate you guys letting us be, be a part of that, so.
We appreciate you being here, and we'd like to, I think, go ahead, Marcus.
Can I say a couple words?
Sure.
Um, so for me, so I've known Joe, because I was once the president of Porter Ridge way back when, Joe was the president too, and he's still there. He's hopefully going to find somebody to step into his shoes. But I want to just mention the fact that the town does not provide any of the sporting activities, so it falls on the athletic associations to do that. And in this case, Joe, who I've known before, being here, I know the long hours that he's put in at Indian Trail, his commitment to it, it's a volunteer position. And the thing is, every kid who plays a sport at the field is getting some exercise, but is also not on the video game or the phone or something of that nature, they're out there doing something. And for me, as, as I'm sitting up here, sports is a big testament to why I'm here, trying to give back to my community, serving in, you know, whatever capacity. So I want to recognize, you know, Indian Trail Athletic Association on their 50th year, especially the land being donated at Edna Love, we know that they, there's a lot of things that they plan to do there and they want to do, but it takes the community to sort of continue helping them achieve that goal. But Joe, thanks for your continued dedication to the town and its citizens, by you volunteering your time.
Thank you, Marcus.
Anybody else?
I just want to thank for all you do, and appreciate your work and effort, and really admire you for the work you do and putting up with the Rogers family over there. So they're good people. But anyway, thanks for what you do.
Mr. Lane, I'm going to come around. Counselor, do you want to come down here too and have your picture made? I think, come on, let's come down and have a picture made. Financial Officers Association, I do believe. And I did need to write that down, because I didn't know what that meant, to be honest with you. But we're going to ask Mr. Wannawich to come up and, and tell us a little bit about this.
Yeah, thanks. I'm very happy to be in front of you tonight. We're recognizing two really great employees of the town that received the North Carolina Government Financial Officer Certification. It was grueling. I believe they took six courses, they had to pass all these exams, and they received their awards last week. But Mike and I thought it would be a great idea to recognize them. Alicia Massey's our tax collector and deputy finance officer, and Alicia, would you guys stand up? Alicia Gaddy is a senior accountant, and they're fantastic. I'm blessed to have them on my staff, and we just thought it would be appropriate to rec, and I know Mike thinks the world of them as well. All I can say is I'm blessed that they're on my staff.
Well.
The Alicias.
I know that, that you girls make Jim look good, so, and, and, and so, and he's great at what he does too, but thank y'all. Y'all do a wonderful job, and I'm not just saying that because you're here tonight, because you, I'm telling you, because you really do do a wonderful job. And you're a great backup for Jim too, fantastic. If, just, I'm glad you're here. Anybody else?
Congratulations on the award.
Very much congratulations, and. Hey, what is that? Okay, that's, gotcha. All right, okay. That brings us to public comments. Do we have public comments tonight? Okay. These are rules for addressing the Indian Trail Town Council. During council meetings, these rules were established by the Indian Trail Town Board and apply to public comments participants. As a reminder, they, they are to be read at each meeting before public comments are received. The board thanks you for sharing your thoughts and concern. Please state your name, and if you're a resident of Indian Trail, clearly for the record, please elect a representative for multiple individuals having the same message. Each speaker or representative will have three minutes to state their concerns. Comments should be directed to the entire board and not to specific individuals. Speakers are to remain respectful with reasonable standards of civility. Please refrain from communicating grievances regarding town staff in this forum. We ask that you redirect those to the town manager. All documents submitted to the board become town property and may be available as requested. Anonymous general written public comments will be read. Reading comments for pu, for public hearings, anonymous writings will be read. All other written public comments will be read for a restricted period of 20 minutes. After 20 minutes remaining, written comments will be noted as either opposing or supporting. Any speaker may be asked to discontinue or be disallowed to speak by the board if rules are violated, and last comments may be recorded and broadcast on the Internet. That brings us to the first person, and I hope I pronounced your last name correctly. Susan Smiley?
Close, Summily.
Summily.
Everybody said that.
Okay. Well, you've got a big smile, so there, there you go.
First of all, I want to thank you, all of you, the councilmen, councilwoman, mayor.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk about the Holly Park Park across from Sun Valley Middle School. Sorry if I couldn't read this. My name is Susan Summily. As you heard, I live in 2008 Council Fire Circle, actually seven houses down from Councilman Ambergy, in Indian Trail, in Holly Park subdivision. And of course, as I said, I'm here to discuss the proposed park across from Sun Valley in front of our subdivision. Several years ago, in 2019, Jerome Sutton, our crossing guard, was recognized for, recognized for his heroic bravery in stepping in front of a truck that did not see and slowed down for students that were crossing. Thankfully, it did stop in time and no one was hurt. At the end of this school year, unfortunately, he's retiring. The intersection has become too dangerous for him to continue. That is the entrance of the park that we're discussing, and I know you know where it's at, but for if anybody's watching, it's where those little things are. It's about acre, 1.42 acres. That is the entrance to this park where there is heavy traffic and no stoplight and cars turning in from several directions. We deal with it daily. Safety is an issue there for all of us. I'm here to ask this town council to slow down and to consider the serious ramifications of a rash decision on this park across from a very busy intersection. The reason why I felt it important to speak today was there was a budget meeting, March 12th, and you discussed the park, so I thought it is a good time to talk about it. At that budget meeting, Councilman Barber said, you know, he liked the idea of the pickleball court, so that's kind of what's out there, and it works in Holly Park, and you'd like to get that moved up and funded. Later in that same meeting, you, it reiterated, I'd like to get this, I like what the staff did, and I'd like to push it forward. Councilman Tom Ambergy, you said, I'm a Holly Park resident, and I'm for it too. And then Councilman Dennis Gay said, I've had discussions with a couple people over at Holly Park, of course, one of them was me, and they've got concerns about pickleball. I don't know if it's the lighting or the traffic or whatever, so I guess what we need to do is, you know, discuss it with Holly, with HOA. And I want to thank you for coming out and walking the park and hearing our comments. Councilman Tom Ambergy responded, you know, you know, my father-in-law used to be on the HOA, and I can get with him, and I know Susan very well, so I'm here to discuss this. We were looking for something very low-key and simple that would keep the space green with lots of beautiful landscaping, flowers, and a walking trail. No more traffic and nothing that needed parking to facilitate it. We have no parking. I know they would build parking.
Is that three minutes, Kev? See if you can wrap it up in about five, 10 seconds.
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry. Well, the bottom line is, Councilman Barber said, look at the Indian Trail survey. And so I did. I pulled it from the website, which is readily available. The number one thing that the Indian Trail residents wanted was walking, biking, and fitness trails. Out of 28 things, pickleball was last. And then there's another.
I'm sorry, that, you've got, you've got three minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, then, that was it. So I just, if you would consider maybe something other than pickleball.
Thank you for coming up and speaking.
Sure. Thank you for your time.
Meg Fielding, welcome back.
Well, thank you. Meg Fielding, and I'm at 1011 Council Fire Circle. And Susan stole, oh, my thunder. At the budget meeting on March 12th, there was some discussion about a new park by the Holly Park subdivision. I've seen some concern on the part of residents regarding which property across from Sun Valley Middle School is being considered, what provisions there would be for parking, and so on. Since the YouTube video of that meeting has sparked these questions and concerns, I was hoping that the YouTube video of this meeting might be able to provide some details. I realize that the project is only in the planning stages, but any details you could provide would be appreciated.
Thank you, Meg, for speaking. Is there any council comment back on that? Okay. Well, thank you guys for speaking. Can I get a, do I need a motion to end? So we're good. All right, that moves us to council feedback. There is no council feedback. That brings us to law enforcement. Come on up. Captain James?
I'm glad if you've got any questions or anything that you want to discuss, I'd be glad to talk to you.
I've got a question for you. I heard you had a couple of hooligans riding around.
I did, rode them around in the afternoon.
A couple of.
I had to block the windows to keep them hanging out.
When was that, today or yesterday?
Today.
Today?
Yes.
And did you?
It was a miserable sight.
I'm joking.
Yeah, I am too.
Councilman Todd and Ambergy, Councilman Ambergy, both rode with Captain James today, so, and you're still alive, so that's, that's great.
And you're still alive.
You live for it. So that's fantastic. And I'd like to say, counsel, I've done that several times, not with Captain James, but it's a, it's fun. It really is.
I've done it too. Yeah, it's good. It's a good way to, to get to see the city from their perspective.
From a different side.
Yep.
Well, if I don't have any questions, then thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Captain James? Okay, got the consent agenda next. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor? Unanimous. Guys, tell me when I raise my hand and not to raise my hand. I've been, I was on council for 10 years, and I, every time I vote, I raise my hand. I don't need to be doing that. But, yeah, I won't do that. We don't have any public hearings tonight, Ms. Dees. We got old business, new town IT position approval, Mr. McLaurin.
I'll be real brief. This is something that we have talked about. The town is growing, our needs are changing, and we would like to be, be able to advertise for a part-time IT position, up to 30 hours. The rate would be $30, $35 an hour, which is extremely reasonable with no benefits. We have talked to our IT vendor and explained why we're taking the approach that we're doing. We'll continue to use them, but as you know, Abby does all of the IT stuff, plus video, plus other stuff, and we need, we, we need a level of expertise that we don't have readily available. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, sir.
Um, right now, the labor market is very tough, right?
Yes, sir.
Hard to find people. So you are advertising that as a part-time position. If it's, is there a time limit that is not filled that you would reconsider and probably make it full-time?
Probably, and I'm going to look back here to Gary, but if we can't fill it, maybe within 60 days, we would revisit that. Also, we have been clear that we think this will grow to full-time eventually, probably sooner than we realize. I've worked in a town where we've had to start an IT function, and it can be very labor-intensive.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Gay?
Just curious, if we're bringing in somebody for 30 hours, why do we need the other group that can't do what we want them to do?
Because the other group, they do some of our, what we call, what I would call, back-office stuff. They manage our servers, they do cybersecurity, things like that. This would be, this position initially would be kind of a front-end tech support, system planning, assistance in deciding what's the best hardware, software, some training, things like that.
So you don't think this person could do both functions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, can I get a motion for Mr. McLaurin?
I'll make a motion to approve the new IT position that Mr. McLaurin just mentioned with a pay range, a part-time position with a pay range of $30 to $35 per hour.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaurin. That brings us to new business, First Avenue, Phase Two, roadway drainage.
Mayor, council, I've come to you about this project. If you don't recall, we did try to bid this project back last year around December. We had two contractors show up for the bid, pre-bid meeting, but we didn't, when we did a bid opening, no, no bids were submitted. So we waited, re-advertised, we got through the advertisement, did the pre-bid, got four contractors to show up this time, but on the bid opening, only had two bid, the project. The two bids were very close, they're only $90,000 between them, so we feel the, the number is appropriate, but it did come over the engineer's estimate by quite a lot. The engineer's estimate came in at 1.3 million, and the bid came back at 2 million. And just to give you some factors on why that's the case, the major factors were concrete has gone up in price, so you have, we have two concrete line items that went up quite a bit, almost 100 grand total. Grading lump sum came up about 100 grand additional. Asphalt went up $50,000. The water main that we had to put in, two line items, total came up to be over 100,000 more than we anticipated, which obviously, we used Union County line items for that, for their, their bid cost. And then one weird item, matting and erosion control. We have a lot of matting and erosion control. This is what you put down along the ditches once you fix them. That thing has evidently went up triple what it used to cost, so it's over 100 grand more to do that, and we have a lot of in that, in that project. So just to give you, that's, that's about a half a million dollars right there in just those three or four items. I did reach out to the contractor and asked him that, you know, if, if there's any room to negotiate. And unfortunately, the way they are bidding projects these days, they're trying to bid in a six-month forecast, knowing that, you know, they're going to get pip on the job, you know, we don't get a pip on the job until about four months, that's the lead time right now. Well, then you got to figure, okay, well, what's the cost going to be for gas and everything else in four or five months? So they said that they would be willing to look at, when we get started in about four months, four or five months, look back and see if prices have went down material-wise and stuff, and possibly negotiate that, but I can't guarantee that. So I've come to you here to request award and the low bid of 2 million to be an ingrained incorporated.
Do we have any questions?
Any further questions on that?
Did they not have labor mentioned on that estimate?
No, you know, no, it's basis, it's a itemized bid line item, so it's based on just material quantities, and so they, they stick the labor within that quantity base.
So they're.
Mr. Gay?
So I'm fairly new to this subject. I know that they've had flooding. Now, is this where they were putting the detention ponds in the area?
Yeah, yeah, this is a critical project, because we, and I'm glad you asked the question, Mr. Gay. This is a critical project, because we've done Phase One, and Phase One don't work unless Phase Two is fixed. And unfortunately, right now, that's the problem. We, we've got to fix these ditches to handle the flow of emptying the detention that we built in Phase One. Yeah.
Are you finished, Mr. Ambergy? Did I cut you off?
Yeah, it's okay.
You good?
Yeah, I got it.
I'm sorry about that.
So the first phase would be a waste if we don't fund this?
That is correct.
Okay.
Got you. Okay, well, so, just real quick, so you've, you've done Phase One, so how much was Phase One?
A million.
A million, so you'd be throwing a million dollars away if you didn't do it.
That's correct.
So, okay, well.
I do have a question.
And I, and I'm sorry. Let me say one more thing about that. We took over First Avenue as a town road that we need to fix, and it's critical that we fix that, but we can't fix without fixing the drainage, so that's another problem.
It just seems to me that there's a $200,000 pad in there, or is that just the cost of doing business? You know, is my thought process. You know, they added a half a million.
Well, remember, we, we do have a 10% contingency in our projects for unforeseen conditions, so, you know, you got over $100,000 you may not spend on this, on this project, but anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Todd, I do remember, I was, I was on the council that decided to do something about First Avenue. That's been, I don't know how many years ago now.
About 10 years.
How many?
10.
I thought five. It's been, time flies, doesn't it, when you're having fun? But I remember that, and I remember how badly it needed it.
I'm sorry, 10 years for talking about this project. You're right, it's been about five years since we actually approved. Sorry, sorry.
It was about five, five years, I thought. Yeah, we talked about it for a long time.
Yes, we've talked about it for a long time.
And for the residents who don't know this, First Avenue was not Indian, actually, they were private roads.
Correct, correct.
And, and I think now the town has taken over the roads, is that correct?
Correct. We recently took it over so we could do this project, yes.
So we could do this project. And actually, it was something that the town really, really stepped up and did, that didn't have, they really didn't have to do that, but it was to help the residents of that area, because that area, that, the people that lived in that area really needed it. And if you've ever been over there, when it's rained a lot, it's terrible, or was. Has, has the Phase One part helped it at all?
It's helped in the sense that, you know, you don't get the constant flooding of the street anymore and yards. But again, and so, we're fortunate enough, we didn't have a lot of rain, so the pond is just storing the water right now, it's not having to expel the water, so we're good on that at least.
So last question. When do you think this project could be completed?
Well, if we start now, and they can get pipe, obviously, in four months, it's a six-month project, so it'll probably be creeping into January next year. a six-month project, so it'll probably be creeping into January next year.
Well, that'd be really a big deal and be fantastic, I think. It makes me feel good that counsel at that time did something to really help a lot of people out over there, and I think they went out of their way to do it, so I appreciate your hard work at it, too. Go ahead, Mr. Barber.
I was gonna add that I was here with Ms. McLaurin when they were having a public meeting here, when Mr. Hunsinger was hosting it, and the vast majority of the residents greatly appreciate this project, and I've been hearing from them all along, and I know Mr. Councilman McIntyre and I wrote out, it's been a long overdue fix, and the people over there, I know they need this, and it's long overdue, and they appreciate it. I think we only have one person who had a mild complaint that day, but I addressed that, and I think he's happy now, hopefully, but the, but yeah, I think it's needed, I think you're right. Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Before you get the motion, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
What's the name of the company, sir, who's gonna do this?
B and N, with the letters B and N, Grading Incorporated.
Okay.
And we've done work with them before, so we don't know them real well, but we do know them.
I ask that so I can make the motion, Mr. Cohen.
Okay. Go right ahead, make a motion for it.
Yeah, so just one more thing, as Mr. Barber alluded and Mr. Cohen as well, we have written out there to this particular part of town, and I'm very happy to see the town government working on behalf of the citizens. It's one of the reasons why we all decided to serve, so kudos to you guys for approving that money and going forward. And with that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve, to BNN Grading Incorporated, to the tune of $2 million, the First Avenue Phase Two roadway drainage project contract.
I'm sorry, does they need the exact number? I just said 2 million because it's fairly close.
Well, let me amend, Mike, give me the exact number.
Yeah, let me give you the exact number, I apologize.
All right.
Sorry. That's good.
Okay, so let's try this again. I wanna make, I'm making a motion to award to BNN Grading Incorporated, First Avenue Phase Two roadway drainage project, to the tune of $2,7686.20, that they get the contract.
We get all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hunsinger, you can stay right there.
Yes, we have, we've been having a seat open at the Stormwater Committee for a few months now. We did do some advertising, didn't get a lot of feedbacks at the initial one, so I reached out, we had two applications about a year ago, when we didn't have a seat to fill, but they sent in applications anyway, and so I reached back out to this gentleman, and he seemed still interested, and he's got a good, he's got engineering background, so I think he'd be very helpful as far as a community member, and so we'd like to fill that seat to Leo, I'm not gonna say his last name because I'll probably say it wrong, so...
I was hoping you would say his last name.
Campania.
Because I'm gonna have to attempt to say it. I would say, what would you say, Marcus?
Campania.
Campania?
Yeah, the G silent.
Leo Campania, okay. Can I get a motion to have Leo Campania on the Stormwater Committee?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the Stormwater Committee appointment, seat one, term ending date, June 30 of 2023, of Mr. Leo Campania.
All in favor? Unanimous.
All right, thank you, Mayor, counsel.
Thank you, Todd. That brings us to Town Hall Facility Upgrade, vendor selection for RFQ, Mr. McLamb.
Hello, everyone, good evening. So this is a project to hire a consultant to do a couple of upgrades, you know, just we've been in the building now five years, and also on some other properties that we own, things like a generator we've talked about in this year's budget, this company would help us with that generator. This is a turnkey company, so this would be, they would take our projects from conception all the way through construction, and then turn them over to us after everything was done and ready to go. Other things would be some safety upgrades that we kinda need downstairs in the front, some maybe charging, EV charging stations, we're looking at some potential grants for those, just a myriad of things, and we would do it as a task order contract, so that's where we're looking at with this. We had two firms that submitted after about a 30-day RFQ process, had a little ranking committee internally, and they, this Miles and McClellan, McClellan Construction, they're in Matthews, is who came out on top. So right now, we're just looking for approval to go into contract negotiation with them, and then we'll bring that contract back to y'all for approval, probably on the consent agenda at the next meeting.
When did you say again, when did you say?
At the next council meeting.
Okay, you kinda got soft there.
Yeah, sorry.
I didn't, I didn't hear well.
Yep.
Okay, all right, can I get a motion, please, for that?
I got a question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
This is gonna include the generator, is that right?
Yes, that'll be one of their task orders, so we'll write task orders out of this contract, and the very first one that they're gonna get is the generator.
What kind of generator?
I will tell you that generators right now are running 18 to 24 months lead time for the size we would need for this building.
You know what brand it is, what type it is?
We would look to them to spec all of that out after they did the construction drawings, and then after they did the electrical requirements.
We need to be careful, because I've had experience with generators, so it's kinda like that fountain out there in the detention pond, if you don't get the right one, you're gonna be replacing it every so often.
Yep.
Adam? Yes, sir, Adam, last year's budget had that generator approved already by previous council.
Yep.
So would we be voting on that again?
No.
Okay.
So what you're voting on is choosing the company to help us do that design work that we need.
Okay.
The generator is already approved.
Is already approved.
Is already approved, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I'm on a roll here, so... I'll make a motion to award the...
We're not awarding a contract, right? So we are just doing vendor approval.
Okay, so...
Make a motion to approve the vendor for contract negotiations.
I haven't set contract yet, let me finish making the motion, and then we'll go from there. I would like to award Miles and McClellan the vendor selection, as the vendor selected to negotiate or to work with the town on a task order contract, is that it, right?
Perfect.
And for the outfit, upgrade of the Town Hall Facility, right?
Okay, all in favor?
Very nice.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us up to the watershed study. Mr. Hunsinger, come on back up. Vendor selection for RFQ.
Yeah, we just wanted to give you an update on this.
RFQ, by the way, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we did the RFQ for that, and I've kinda talked about that in the budget workshop and stuff, but for the watershed management plan, we did a selection committee, and we selected, we had three firms submit, we selected Withers and Ravenel Incorporated. Right now, we're just negotiating with them, working on the contract and everything. Again, this is gonna be almost a minimum nine-month process as far as this management plan, so we're giving them a little bit extra time to get that contract ready to go, and then obviously, we need to talk to them, so it's gonna take about a month, so we'll come back to y'all with the cost for an approval, but just again, this is just an update. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, do we need to make a motion for that? Kathy?
Just vendor selection.
Just vendor selection, okay. Does somebody want to like to make a motion?
Yeah, it would be good if we can get the name again, for the record.
I didn't catch it either, sorry.
Rivers and?
Withers and Ravenel, W-I-T-H-E-R.
Yeah. Avanel?
Ravenel, yeah, Ravenel, Withers Ravenel Incorporated.
All right.
Go get a motion, man.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, we, the name is what I'm trying to get right there. So I'll make a motion for the river, the watershed study, that we select the vendor from the RFQ of Withers and Ravenel Incorporated.
Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous. Mr. Hunsiger, thank you very much for that, and thank you for your work on the Stormwater Committee, and I'd like to thank Councilman, Mayor Pro Tim, Todd Barber for heading that committee up. You do great work, thank you for what you do for the town.
They do all the work.
He's just there to run the meeting, is that right? Okay, well, that, we don't have any discussion items, so that brings us to a closed session, so I know that the council's gonna move in for closed session, I couldn't tell you how long it would take to come back out, I think we're done with all town business, except for the manager's update and council comments. So, you know, you're welcome to stay, but if I were you, I'd go home. But do what you wanna do, and the reason I say that is because there's really no more business after we come back, so...
And it's my birthday, and they got birthday cake in there.
They got birthday cake. Now, I do have, thank you for reminding me that, if we all wanna get together and sing happy, do we all wanna sing, Todd, Happy Birthday?
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday dear Todd. Happy Birthday to you.
Thank you very much, that's very good.
Well, I'm not in the shower, so that sounds better in the shower. But seriously, there is cake in there.
There is cake in there, and if somebody wants to bring it out here, and I tell you what, there's a lot of cake in there, so take some home with you if you want to.
Is the cake free, Mr. Mayor?
What now?
Is the cake free?
The cake is free.
Because he's a government guy, so we wanna make sure the cake is free.
The cake is free, so grab you a piece of cake and thank a Mr. Hunsinger, when, no, not Hunsinger, my God, thank a Mr. Barber when you eat it. So with that being said, I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we have a closed session under NCGS 143318.11A6 regarding employment performance. Now, can I get a motion to go into closed?
Motion to go into closed session.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Don't forget to raise your hand.
And I've raised my hand, so that's...
Yeah, stop that.
It's up here.
Motion's been made.
Motion to come back into...
I'll make a motion to come on a closed session.
Thank you, all in favor? Unanimous. Very good, that brings us to manager's update.
I will try to be very quick. Mr. Ambergy brought up the attention on the railroad crossing, and we have contacted the railroad, and I don't have a schedule, but they are moving it up to schedule, and we're not gonna put wood back, they're gonna do concrete, so it should be, should work well. You might get some complaints with them closing the crossing, so we'll let you know what we've got. The other thing I wanna mention to you is thank you for moving your second budget meeting to the end of the meeting, first meeting in April. We are meeting with Councilmember Barber, or, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Barber, and Councilmember McIntyre, they've raised some very good questions, I've had Jim pull some information, and we'll be meeting with those folks tomorrow. We will be reaching out to the rest of you over the next few days to see if you can come in, and we can do a more in-depth of this is where we are with our budget, that sort of thing, because it's very important to me that we answer your questions early, and that we make sure we are focusing on the priorities that the council has. Just to kinda quickly walk you through the rest of the schedule until we get to budget approval, it's after the 12th. If you feel like you wanna have another council budget meeting, we can certainly schedule that, we have plenty of time for that. We will, I will present the budget to you on May 3rd. It goes out to the public on the 10th, you'll do a public hearing on the 24th of May, and you approve it by June 14th, two weeks before the deadline. Once you approve the budget, what happens is Jim has to start updating his systems, so as you can see, there's a lot of time to go in there. As we go through the process, if you have any questions, or if there's some, you wanna sit down with the staff to meet and talk through that, we'll certainly be available for that, and we'd certainly appreciate your understanding. Athletic field reservations, if you wanna reserve a field, we opened that up a couple weeks ago, we give priority to Indian Trail residents and historical users. The deadline for getting in the first realm of the reservation is April 30th. We are doing some Friday night flicks at 6:00 PM at Crooked Creek Park, we wanna thank Pleasant Plains Dental for sponsoring that. And you heard mention of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, I sent you some information on their City Vision Annual Conference, April 26th through the 28th. Registration deadline is March 28th. If you are interested and would like to go, if you'll let Kathy or myself know, we will get you registered, it is in Wilmington, and several of you are going to essentials and municipal government. If I could just caucus with y'all after this meeting for about five minutes, I've got some information to give you. That's all I've got, sir.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to council comments. Karen?
Ms. Buhollick. Well, I did wanna thank everyone for coming out today, it was exciting to see new faces out there. Of course, I wanna wish Todd a happy birthday, Councilman Barber, and wanna wish best wishes to Karen, you know, you were great, and we are gonna miss you, and that's all.
Mr. Ambergy?
Well, I just wanna say happy birthday to Todd also, I woke up this morning, the first thing I said, or texted him, happy birthday, so I was the second one, I think, behind his mother at 5 o'clock this morning, or 7 o'clock, but also Karen, yeah, short time, it's been a pleasure, and continued success for yourself, and God bless everyone.
Mr. Gay?
No, there's nobody here but staff, so staff, thank you for all your work, and Karen, I wish you the best, and everybody be careful going home, thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
Yeah, Karen, I wanna take a minute just to thank you for your legal advice over the years, your invaluable legal advice. You've really had the town of Indian Trails best interest at heart when giving us the advice, you've really helped us through some difficult moments, sort of shepherd us through, if I can say that, and we're very grateful for that, we appreciate your professionalism, and we do wish you the very best. Usually towns are quick to get rid of their attorneys, in this case, we asked you and begged and pleaded for you to come back or stay, to no avail, but the thing is, we, you know, you created some, you know, good relationships here in town, so we do wish you the very best, and don't be a stranger. Todd, a happy birthday to you, I mean, we know it's your birthday because you're wearing that red jacket, so, I mean, we have no choice but to know it's a special occasion. I was looking for a little red sweater on Little Joe T., but I didn't see that there. Hopefully, we'll see that later this evening, but many wishes to you, sir, on your 30th birthday again. Counsel, thank you very much, staff, as always, as Abby said, those in the peanut gallery, thank you, good evening, appreciate all of you guys, all of what you guys do, thank you very much.
Mr. Barber?
First off, thank you, Ms. Walter. I came here after I got elected, got sworn in, and I think in the first two weeks, I was sitting in your office, and you helped lead us to a better environment here. Your integrity, your professionalism, and your thoroughness, greatly appreciate it. You helped me be a better council person, and I really appreciate that, and gave me a little knowledge along the way, too, so, you know, I really appreciate the job you did, and if you ever need a reference, I'll be more than happy, might not mean anything, but I'll be more than happy to. Ms. Gaddy, Ms. Massey, congratulations on a job well done, you're part of a wonderful staff here, and it just continues to get recognized and do a great job, and congratulations to you, Mr. Waters, on leading them, and you do, just appreciate the numbers, I'm a numbers guy, and it's always a pleasure. Thanks to everybody for the birthday wishes, and I really appreciate the people who said I don't look near as old as I really am, but, you know, so the gray hair shows it, but anyway, and I was gonna thank Captain James for letting us spend some time with us, and I'd appeal to anyone up here to, like Mr. Ambergy and I did today, is every time you go over there and see what they're doing, it's just a renewed appreciation for the great Sheriff's Department Division that we've got here, it's just a wonderful group, the Captain James has really built a great team here, and it's only a staff of 30 compared to other towns who have 100 who are smaller than us, so it's a wonderful environment that they got going on over there, and I can't wait for the fingerprint machine, Little Joe T. wants to go over there and register... Joe T. wants to go over there and register those lethal weapons of his, so, you don't hear that no more in movies, but anyway. But anyway, thanks for the staff and everybody. Thank you for the birthday wishes and the cake, and, uh, have a blessed evening. Thank you.
And Mayor Cohen?
A couple of things. Um, the first thing is, is, um, I'd like to wish Todd a happy birthday like everybody else. Uh, first thing, I woke up this morning, and I got a text from him, and he says, "You gonna wish me a happy birthday?" And, uh, and I did it. But, uh, anyway, no, happy birthday, Todd. And, uh, by the way, the, the cake, uh, was my idea. I think, I think, uh, Kathy tried to talk me out of it, and she...
It was your idea.
Yeah, it was. It was. Her and I talked about it, and, uh, well, that's right. Excuse me. Mr. Amburgi told me, and I told you. But what, but, but what, what I was gonna say was, is she tried to talk me out of it and tell me to get him a card.
Something healthy.
And nobody would've wanted a card, and he would've thrown the card away, and we get to eat all that cake, so...
Well, I want him to have something healthy, not have a cake.
I, I understand. Anyway...
He's got a wife for that, knock it off.
There you go. There you go. But anyway, uh, I do, I wanna tell the staff that there's a lot of food back there. Uh, Jim got lots of food, so hopefully, it'll be here tomorrow, too. So, if y'all wanna, I guess, y'all save it and put it in the refrigerator or whatever.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So, uh, you have lots of food back there, and, uh, and congratulations to Ms. Gaddy and Ms. Massey and, and Jim and all of you. Thank you for all, all the staff. You're wonderful, and I know you hear it over and over again, uh, and there's a reason for that, but, because you deserve it. So, anyway, thank you. Adam, thank you also. All, all of you, uh, are wonderful. And last but not least, and, and I've, I've probably said too much already, but, uh, you know, Karen, you've, you've been a, you've been a rock for a long, long time, and, uh, I think most people in this room were here when Karen came, came, uh, on. And, uh, if you remember, she came on in a really rocky time, uh, back in those days, but you got us through that time, and you've got us through some more, and, uh, you were, you were, you were a rock for us, and really much appreciated. Thank you, and, and, uh, maybe y'all, maybe I can, y'all invite us to come play golf someday out there at the Penitent.
Absolutely.
Would love that. But anyway, uh, thank everybody. Thanks for staying tonight, and, uh, I'll see y'all next time. So, uh, with that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, thank, thank you, Ms. Boholic. All in favor? Unanimous.